Recording.
Thank you. All members are present, plus Paul Varga and Kit. Thank you. Can I make a suggestion to my board that we move item under Old Business, Item 7, the petty cash request? So we can let Kit go. Got a heavy schedule.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Have you already done members present?
I think I did. I mentioned that you and Roger are here.
Okay, and then can we do hear from the public and then I'll make that motion?
Okay, is there any public to be heard? Any public to be heard? Any public to be heard? Okay.
Okay, and I make a motion to move Item 7H, Review Petty Cash Policy, to be next on the agenda.
Is there a second?
One second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
We, as Catherine, you and Roger were where we started the discussion last, at our last regular meeting, about this, because I had had a previous discussion with Kit. And there are times when she feels she needs a petty cash and would certainly help with the program needs over there. So following our last meeting, I asked her to put together a brief narrative for us, which she did, and I forwarded on to you folks. So Kit, why don't you give us a brief rundown of, or you could read it if you wanted, of your narrative, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, well, you can read it, so I'm not gonna do that. But I would suggest, so it's things like, it's as simple as, we've run out of cream, and I have to send somebody over to Cumbes to get some cream. Or the cookies got eaten by the Thursday bingo, and I need them for the Friday program because somebody ate the cookies, so I've gotta go get some. And it's just, you know, little tiny amounts of money that I'm thinking about, that if I had a petty cash fund, then I wouldn't have to say for $1.75, have the finance office cut me a check for $1.75. I'd keep them until we were coming near whatever limit you give me, and then I turned them in at that point. You know, also, I have times when I have to make change for one of the programs. And if the program costs $3 and they only have a $5 bill, then I don't carry much of my own change. You know, we ask everybody, but sometimes the person can't pay because they don't have $3 and we can't make change. So we say to them, okay, pay next week. But, you know, people forget, and I think that the revenue that we're supposed to be getting for programs like that aren't exactly happening. It's only $3, but, you know, it can add up. That's what I wrote to you. But there's also something else that's coming up. We're going to be in January doing birthday parties every month. I've got a wonderful volunteer who's taking this over, and the Commission on Aging is also involved in that. And we want to be able to do small little gifts, so that people have something to open at their party. So we're talking dollar store gifts. But again, those are small amounts of money. So I was hoping that you folks would agree that having a small amount of petty cash over at the Senior Center would be useful and would save the finance office from having to write little checks. And we'd wait until there was a larger amount.
Thanks, Kit.
Catherine? Yeah, I have a question. What amount do you think you need to keep in petty cash?
I was thinking in terms of like between 50 and 100. 100 might be too much. 50 might not be quite enough. It depends on what the birthday parties will be doing. And I don't know, I don't have those stats, because we haven't started it and won't be starting it till January. So.
Okay, when it comes to using petty cash, what will your notification process be for the Finance Department?
I would assume that we would set up some kind of piece of paper that we do, or I can use the current way now where I have a front page where I clip all the receipts to it, tell them what each thing is for, so that it can be deducted from the right accounts. You know, not everything's going to be program accounts, so that can be done. And then a couple of days later after after they've had a chance to process it, go over to Town Hall and pick up the cash again.
Bill, I'd like to make a motion, so that we have, for purposes of discussion, to approve petty cash in the amount of $100 for the Senior Center Director.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, Roger, you have any thought? Questions?
I just, like I said, I my concern is when we deal with our audits and what have. I know historically auditors and what have, you don't like petty cash. And have we ever had a recommendation from auditors when we've done this before, or did we do it before?
My recollection is, is a number of years ago, they made a recommendation that we not have petty cash, because they felt that there were a couple of departments that just weren't doing proper accounting or upkeep on that.
Correct, and the departments were not the Senior Center. The the, as long as we have a good method for accounting for petty cash, it should not be a problem from an auditor perspective. So that's why I asked, what will be the follow-up process? Who's gonna keep a balance of petty cash in, I'm sure, a secure location? And she's going to have the receipts from use of petty cash. And I'm assuming that in the case of someone who either forgets or is not able to pay for their food, you know, we're talking about a disenfranchised group, so to speak, that you will be putting some kind of a receipt in there to that effect and who the person was.
Absolutely.
So if you, if there's a good accounting process for this, it wouldn't hurt to check with our auditors about what the accounting process should be, but I don't see, it's $100.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's $100, and the issues that we faced before with petty cash were more than that, and it was out of control.
My thought was perhaps that I support the motion. And I think that Kit has got a long track record of proper bookkeeping and reporting and that sort of thing. But my thought was, let's do it either for a 90-day trial basis or a six-month, whatever the board is comfortable with, then revisit it and get feedback from Kit and also from our Finance Department, make sure that it's going along well.
I like that idea.
And take it from there.
All right. You wanna make a proposal?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
So I would make, I guess, a friendly amendment to that. Right? Which is, for a period of time of I'm gonna say 90 days for it to be the process to be assessed by our Finance Department.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, Kit. Ball's in your court.
Thank you.
Kit, the 90 days is just to make sure that we're making, that the process is working okay. And we don't have people complaining behind the scenes, and everything's out in the open. So I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be fine.
We'll get your cash to you probably about a year from today.
Let me know, I'll give it to you.
I've been here for three and a half years without a petty cash.
I can appreciate what you were talking about, having been there, giving out food and taking in money. So definitely.
All right, well, Kit, thank you very much for joining, and I like, you're welcome to stay with us, but if not.
No, I'm gonna go eat my dinner.
Totally excused.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I will take a motion to re-return back to the agenda.
You don't need to, we just went, we just put that one in between. So you're just moving on to the first Selectments briefing.
Okay. Updates, the split unit improvements and installations at the Firehouse have been completed. I understand that everything, we had one minor glitch, and we do have some funding left over from what was approved. And upon installation, you correct me, Paul, if I'm wrong, but they found that the units, the previous units, the old units, the old style that were, were never hooked into the generator. So we're
Quality and quality planning.
We'd be in fine shape, but we won't have any heat or air conditioning if the lights go off. But anyway, we're on that, we don't expect that to be a big number, but all of the infrastructure, the units and everything are all in. That's been completed. The split unit installation scheduled for Norton Hall are due to start on or about October 17. We anticipate that it's going to be about pending not having any issues come up, but about a two-week process from then. I've had a meeting with the Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Library, as well as their contractor, just to make sure we're all on the same page. They are anticipating minimal interruption of any services, if any at all, either with the library or with the hall, because most of the work is gonna be taking place from outside the building. And the only thing they'll be doing is putting attachment plates on the inside, but all of the infrastructure and that will be coming from the outside, so. I did have a meeting with one of the members of the Garden Club, actually ran into her yesterday, I didn't run into her, but I saw her yesterday. There are a few plantings and that around Norton Hall that are gonna have to either come out or be cut back away from the walls for the installation, and I've asked her to pass that on to the rest of the group and contact my office if there's any question on that, so. That's proceeding pretty well. The best news of the evening is that we've received approval of our grant for the steep grant this year. $500,000 for the resurfacing that of Southworth Drive and Pompe Road. So that was terrific, and I'd like to congratulate Chris on all her hard work on that and due diligence. I was quite surprised at how fast the turnaround that was. But it is an election year, but anyways.
So we're talking about Southworth Drive, Norton Hall resurfacing?
Norton Hall, Southworth Drive resurfacing, and the small road that leads into Southworth is called Pompe Road.
Okay.
That's also part of the plan.
Thank you.
There was an excellent Family Day event yesterday, a real good turnout, the entertainment was terrific. I thank the Rec Department, as well as our social, Melissa with our Social Service, at doing the fine job. It has been suggested to me, and I think it's a good idea, next year we put together a little committee to assist those folks and perhaps get some fresh ideas and everything, but it was a beautiful weather, of course, but a very nice turnout.
I heard the Health Department was there. How did we do?
We did okay. There were a couple of very minor things. I met with Lynette, but nothing major and no citations or anything, so a couple of recommendations, but we did fine.
I was delighted that Sherry was able to bring in that program that we had talked about last year. We weren't able to do last year.
The circus program?
Absolutely. It's, it was really, it's really a phenomenal thing, and I'm really glad that she was able to do that.
It was nice, because I know her budget didn't have enough to support her, it wasn't in there. She supported half of it. Melissa contributed some from her budget. And I understand the Senior Center donated $100.
So that's nice.
It was a nice community effort, which is what we we certainly need and what we're used to getting here.
And actually, just so you know, ARPA funds could have been used for that. We had looked at this before. So should it come up in the future?
Yeah.
For anything that has to do with kind of reunited the community after COVID.
Well, I, you know, it's probably because those groups did take it out of their budgets. It's probably not too late when we revisit some ARPA coverage that we may be able to cover that.
I would like, I would like that. I know that I talked with them about that last year.
Yeah.
And I think that just in the, you know, just in trying to get everything done, they probably didn't try to pursue that.
Yeah.
But absolutely, it can be covered.
Excellent. Well, that's good news. I've shared a couple of emails with you folks, but I also wanted, I had this before, I got one tonight, again on Secar Road, and thank you for that follow-up, Catherine, about your experience this weekend, but I'm getting numerous complaints throughout the town. Up until this past week, primarily around the lake programs, about quads on town roads. And also certain areas where they're going on the state roads, 44, 89. It's becoming quite a problem, and I do have a call-in with Troop C, although I understand they were called tonight on an incident there on Troop, on Secar Road, relating to this, that I've not got a report of what their findings were, but it is of concern, both of a nuisance level and an obvious noise level, as well as damage. As you know, we're, our ARPA program, we did support some fencing and things that are Asher Memorial Park, because we're experiencing damage from some of these quads on our baseball fields and things like that, so it's an issue that we're gonna have to put our heads together and come up with hopefully a solution, but I.
Well, on Secar, Bill, on Secar is motorbikes, and this is an obvious safety issue. I mean, literally, they're tearing up and down Secar Road. I'm sure they're going elsewhere. I've only caught, I caught them on Secar. And they you know, it's a one-lane road. And as it was for me to just pull over and everything, they had to stop because of the amount of space there is on the road. So we know where they, we know where at least one of them lives. And, you know, out here, I know my husband talked with Kathy. I'm trying to remember her last name. The wife of the person complained, he saw her tonight, we walk our dogs on that road. And, you know, this time, the people, the young people accosted her, they threatened her.
Yeah, I read the, I read the email.
This is not, this is not okay, and so it's its own incident in terms of, it's not just, you know, all these roads, it's, there's this very specific problem on this road. And I don't get to see it, because I live further up, but the people who live on the road are pretty upset. And, and it's definitely a safety problem.
I agree. I'm also getting ongoing complaints from a particular resident, and I've also shared emails with you folks on Kidderbrook about target practice, and I sent and I copied you folks another email alerting, because there's certain accusations being made about Troop C. And I've copied them on it, and it's on my list of things to talk to them further about. I've offered the complainant numerous times to facilitate a meeting with him and his neighbors that he's complaining about, and he refuses to do it, and other than the fact that it's a civil matter, our hands are kind of tied on this thing. But it's.
Yeah, I encountered, I encountered the same thing. He's been going on for some time about this.
Oh, well, yeah, well over a year, probably.
And, and the thing is, the person who's complaining has a gun permit, you know, the safety issue that he described is not a safety issue. It's not. I've seen how the thing is set up. The police went out, the troops sent out their expert. The backstop is set up properly, the way it should be. And this business about, oh, if he just moves in a certain, you know, slight direction, it's going to hit someone next door. No, it's not. That's not possible.
Yeah.
So.
No, and in fact, that backstop you're talking about, the state police not only consulted with the folks that are doing it, they more or less designed it or told them what they had to do, and then they went up and did a follow-up check of it and advised me that it's many safety standards as they felt were needed, but
Right.
It's an issue, I just, you folks want to be aware of it. The final thing I have is that Chris jumped from preparation of one grant to another. And presently, we're finalizing the application for the Brownfield Remediation Grant for Kettle Rock, which is due on the 23rd of September. And again, I appreciate her diligence on that, and I hope we have the success on that application that we've had on the steep grant. That's in process, near completion. I know we've been talking with council on it, and it seems like it's coming along pretty good. That's all I have on the, on the briefing. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of those items? Catherine, you all said?
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to Item 5, Acceptance of the Minutes of the Following Meetings.
I moved to, I moved to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of September 6.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, unanimous?
I move to accept the minutes of the special meeting of September 8.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are any corrections or additions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Special meeting of September 10.
Let me just take a quick look here.
I missed one, was that the 12th?
You're with me.
I want to say it was the 12th.
Yeah.
I'm just taking a quick look. I move to accept the minutes of September 10 from the special meeting.
I'll second.
Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous? Special meeting of September 12.
Give me just a second and double-check.
Believe that Roger.
Yeah, I was not.
The only thing I would challenge on this is that is that it was challenged, the Ashford, I'm sorry, the Wellington First Selectwoman said that the restricting, the motion to restrict hunting was not appropriate on the agenda. I didn't think that was the case. I didn't say anything, because I wasn't going to interrupt her, but.
I didn't either, but I, you know, I figured because there was a question of it and everything, that probably I think all we have to do is reiterate it.
All right.
And remake.
All right, then I move to accept the minutes of September 12.
I will second that, indicating Roger was excused. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You hear from Boards, Commissions, Committees, Departments? Paul, any report from?
He said the splits are done.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
He, Paul said he had nothing to report. Under Old Business, Item 8, Discuss Reopening Strategies. Everything is the same. For some reason, I didn't get our report from Eastern Highland until Friday night at about 9:30 at night, but I sent that out to everybody today. We remain in the yellow category. Nothing has changed. Hospital admissions continue to drop. Item B, Ashford Advisory School Building Committee, I had a brief discussion with Cindy Ford, and I also saw the event yesterday, John Caloris. And we all seem in agreement, I'll try to get ahold of Jim Rupert. We're all anxious to see when the next Building Committee meeting is gonna be. And I'll report back to you as soon as I hear. COVID update, I think I just did that. Item D, Update Status of the After-School Children's Program. We continue to research it. I have not heard. I did find out, because if the Rec Committee is going to be doing it, I know my recommendation, what I'll be comfortable with, is if they use an outside payroll firm like the Bevcock Library is doing. I spoke with the library, got the name and contact for the Rec Committee to do that, and I just have not heard back from David yet, so I assume that's the next element for pricing and costing for that program.
Right, they have, they have quite a bit of additional information they need to flesh this out with, correct?
Correct. It's, it, the biggest challenge that I see, because in doing research on other municipalities that have been doing this in the past, and I believe Hebron was one that sticks out, they were doing it for a number of years, three weeks or probably closer to four now. They had an announcement, welcoming everybody back, including their director. And two weeks later, they were advertising for help. And I think the biggest challenge that we're all gonna have to go to the critical step is whether or not there's people interested in working this program.
And that are reliable.
That are reliable and affordable. So there, I don't think anybody that I know of, including us, have denied there's a need for it, but there's a lot of elements in this that really had to be pulled together and taken a broad spectrum look at it on affordability, particularly for the parents that are involved. So I'll keep you updated on it. I'm just gonna continue to carry Item F here, American Rescue Plan, but.
You missed street lighting.
Oh, street lighting is status quo. I continue to try to pull my hair out, which I don't have anymore. Getting that moved on, I do have a meeting, at least a conference coming up with Eversource, hopefully by the end of the week, and that's top on one of my agenda items. F is American Rescue Plan. What I'd like to do is, as I said, I'm gonna carry this. And, you know, like what we're talking about, Catherine, with, if it's feasible on the Family Day expenses we run into, also the reimbursement for the settlement for one of our staff that we all agreed to, that is still pending, incidentally. But anyway, I'll continue to carry that in hopes that in the near future, we can put together another town meeting for approval of some items. Trumpco House Review Committee. I copied you last week, I believe it was, it could have been the week before. I finally heard back from Bob Hurd, who's promised me he's gonna get to work on it again. We've kind of heard that story previously, but I'll keep you posted as I hear more. Item H, we've addressed already.
Bill, before you move, move on, on the Trumpco House thing.
Yeah.
Can you throw a date out there to Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
That's what I had to do to get to getting him to do anything.
Yeah, yeah. My, my last email to him, as you may recall, it was I didn't show the patience that I've tried to show before him, because I, I don't think there's any excuse. And we all feel for his health issues, but professionalism has to be shown here, at least to contact us and let, let us know what the status is. Catherine, I have no problem. I'll put a date out there. Item H, we've taken care of. Revisit Employee Insurance and Center Program. You had asked, and the board agreed, for me to talk to Duncan. You had asked and I, the board agreed for me to talk to Duncan about this, about the implications, uh, of.
I'm changing it back.
Uh, I posed that to him, but, um, I did not follow up with him and I'll, I'll revisit that again, I don't have an answer right now.
All right, thank you.
Kettle Rock property, although I hate calling it that, it's actually the Ashford property now. Um, I've already mentioned to you about the status of the application, it's due on the twenty-third. And, uh, Chris is working diligently on that. Um, the next item, bullet item is consideration of hunting ban on the Kettle Rock property.
And I, Bill, are you looking for, are you looking for a motion tonight on that?
Yes, I am.
Oh, I would love to make that motion.
I would love to have you make that motion.
Anything to please you, um.
Note that, everybody.
Beast's getting a bump on the head, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, to restrict hunting or to ban hunting on the town's Kettle Rock property.
Is there a second?
Yeah, we had a, I mean, good discussion and safety considerations and everything, uh, given the use that we're outlining, I, I have to concur.
So we have a second.
Second.
All right, um, any further discussion, Roger?
Um, the only thing I would add, if I could add to it is, um, uh, due to public safety considerations.
To the motion?
Yes.
I agree. All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, new business. Um, board and commission committee appointments, Recreation Department. We have not got a written recommendation yet, although I understand they do have a very active candidate. Economic development, I have not heard, um, of any proposals from them, Chris, have you got anything in?
No, Mike said they were gonna bring it up at their next meeting.
Okay. Commission on Aging, um, I understand that Charlene Armitage attended their last meeting and, um, I saw her yesterday and I expect to get a letter of request from her and a recommendation from the commission in short order. And inland wetlands, we have a vacancy, uh, as a result of Mr. Fens. Um, um, resignation. I'd also like to thank Ray for his long service to the town, but I have not heard from them regarding a, uh, a replacement this time. All right, moving on, item B, tax refunds, Chris, do we have any?
No.
Very good. Remarks for the good of the board. Hearing none? Uh, items for the next board of selectmen's meeting.
Uh, I'd like to get, I'm, so I'm sorry, did you have something?
Go, go, go ahead.
Uh, transfer station committee.
I agree, we need a meeting.
Yep.
That, that committee has been basically, uh, named with their charge, uh, at least, I think at least a year ago. Uh, so it's, uh, we need, we really need to, uh, get that going.
I agree.
Don't we also in the, uh, have some capital improvements on the dump too that we have to?
We do, we, we are approved for new fencing and everything, you know, I wanna run that by the board. Uh, I mean, by the committee, uh, it's gonna ultimately be our decision, their advisory, but there.
We have to acknowledge terrorists.
Okay, I thought we done that. I thought we did that last meeting. Um, I'm also concerned about lighting, particularly this time of the year, out in the back. And I talked to, uh, Joe Kalanowski and Alex about, we have a light that was taken out by the company that bought out Willie Waste. While the post and the light is there, it's not working, but I, I'm seriously concerned, particularly with it getting darker early now, that we'd need some supplemental lighting back.
Or lighting.
Lighting is my nightmare.
And part of what the transfer station committee is supposed to be looking at is, you know, the fact that we have people who are dumping their, uh, I'm, I wanna use the word illegally, let's just say that they don't have the right to dump there, they're not getting stopped.
Say, say that again, I'm sorry, Catherine.
What we also have down at the transfer station is we have people dumping there that do not have stickers. Okay, they're not getting stopped and we need to have a pro- a process in place that prevents that. You know, our tipping fees or whatever we, well, we call them are, uh, quite a bit. They're not getting, they're not going down. And, uh, the transfer station committee was supposed to be looking at, I believe, all aspects, and I don't have the charge with me here, but they should be looking at that from that perspective, it needs to be improved.
Yeah.
I, I get complaints about it all the time.
I agree. Um, we'll put that at that to the agenda and we'll also advise their members that, uh, wanna have a discussion on that. Um, I'd like to, um, also ask if we could have a special selectmen's meeting for Wednesday morning to talk about personnel issues.
What time?
Um, I'd like to, about ten o'clock?
Could be a little earlier.
Um, I couldn't, yeah, I'd have to do it earlier, I have, uh,
Earlier works for me.
I have, I have an eleven-thirty physical therapy appointment, so I just don't wanna be late for it.
I will do a call for nine o'clock this coming Wednesday regarding personnel, uh.
Okay.
And Chris had also reminded me, I believe I mentioned it in my briefing, but we didn't formally accept Carol Fishman's resignation with regret.
Should we add that to the agenda?
So I would ask for motion to add that to the agenda.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, um, we'll open the floor for discussion, I, you know, I, I, if we have a motion and we have to accept it, I wonder, can we reject it and say, no, she can't leave?
That would not be kind.
I guess we can't do that. Um, no, and, and, and it's with regret and, um, I know Carol likes it here and I know we like her here, but, um, um, I don't, obviously, we don't have any alternative than to wish her the best.
Okay, so. I'll, I'll make the motion to accept her resignation with regret and to thank her for her years of service to the town as our assessor.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Um, I have been having discussions with, with a couple of mayors and other first selectmen and doing some research and hiring practices, even with CCM, I'm, I'm advised, on a statewide basis, is municipalities are really suffering right now. Um, and it's an employees market out there and there's some critical positions. Obviously, we have a couple, but that other towns are experiencing and the volume of responses just aren't there, so. We'll stay on it, but, um, I don't have anything else and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, yep.
Thank you, folks.
Right.
Have a good evening. And I will be talking to you, uh, Wednesday morning, if not sooner.
All right.
Thank you.